I know that. We have been, um. It's been a busy week. Are there any, um, and it's only. Are there any citizen statements or petitions?
Yes. First person is Ann Levitt. Ann Levitt.
Sorry. Good evening, everyone.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Please remember you only have three minutes. When you get up there, please state your name and your address. And we do have our little trusty electronic functioning thing over there. Yes.
Go.
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I just have one quick question, which won't take three minutes. I'm a member of the Board of the Library. And we have been waiting for the announcement for the committee, for the planning committee, for the building of the new library, which we hope we get very soon. And we also would like to request that the Library Board be kept in the loop in terms of information. We don't seem to get that. In fact, I only received a copy of the Planning Committee today because I stopped in at the Town Hall. And up until now, we've had a lot of rumors, but we've not had any confirmation of what was going on. And even our director, Elizabeth Lane, had no information other than what we heard as gossip, so to speak. So I'm just requesting that you let us know when there might be a formal announcement of the committee. And more so, when there would be an actual meeting and the start of the committee, a working committee. Thank you.
You're, uh, thank you. I don't remember the exact date that we announced the Library Building Committee.
It was in January.
It was in January. So in January, we did make a formal announcement right here at the Council for the Library Building Committee. I just received an email today from Marguerite of those who came in to do their swearing in. So now we know who's already sworn in. We know that we do have some minority representation that we have to find. Um, we're probably gonna clone Patrick and Fran to put them on that committee. And as soon as the, um, as soon as there's a meeting set up, I know that Nancy is trying to work on that. I got an email from her about that today. So we will definitely keep the library abreast of what's going on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
From Ann Mary.
Hi. Good evening, Madam Mayor, all these fine Town Council people, the Town Manager. I was gonna be joined tonight by one of the students from the Philly Park Ambassadors, but he's not well. So I'm gonna read our statement, but actually, it was from the voice of the Philly Park Ambassadors. And I was really hoping that would happen so you wouldn't have to hear me again, but I'm sorry, I couldn't. So anyhow. The Philly Park Committee was established in 2008 as a permanent committee by the Town Council. They were charged with, we were charged with fundraising, but they, what we also served as a voice for our citizens on the design of Philly Park. In 2015, the Town Council, with help from various grants, took steps to bring what was once Bloomfield's jewel back to life after years of neglect. We are now in 2020. This centerpiece of and for the community is still not completed. This year, the plan is to reconstruct the north parking lot with $50,000 from the annual budget. That's all we have. This means the design of the natural playground, the meditation circle, and anything west of Philly Pond remains unfinished. Citizens and businesses who generously donated over $90,000 to support Philly Park are wondering what's going on. The Philly Park Ambassadors were part of this fundraising effort. They were the students that were out in front of Geisler's in December and February and March, and at Celebrate Bloomfield, and even at the concerts we had on the Green. And they talked to people that donated. They were, uh, I may be biased, but they were ultimately the best ambassadors and fulfilled all the things that we talked about up front. They praised the town. They praised the town. And they thanked, they were thanked personally for helping. When I came in to ask if anybody was interested at the high school, working with their advisor, Mrs. McMillan, I told them that they could make a difference. They were freshmen. They're now sophomores. And I know that they want to make a difference this year and for years to come. One of the students is here tonight, Ethan, who is one of the mainstays, I would think you would say, as far as the ambassadors are. So today, the Philly Park Committee asks the Town Council to make Philly Park a top priority in 2020. We respectfully request funding come from the Capital Improvement Program to not just redo a parking lot, but build the playground, create the meditation circle, and restore and maintain the trail system. Let 2020 be the year that we celebrate the reopening of Philly Park. I know that the Philly Park Ambassadors want this to happen as much as we do, so hopefully that will be the case. Thank you very much for your time and your patience. Thank you.
Pauline Davis. I'm Pauline Davis Sullivan, 15 Jerome Avenue. For the past 10 years, I've been coming to the meeting every time because I'm paying at least $2,000 to $3,000 more than people in my neighborhood and surrounding area. I've come to the accessory over and over, and every time I come, he tells me he's gonna get back to me, he's gonna get back to me. When I came on, I had some family problems, I had to be taking them to the doctors. I came the 21st of February to, to appeal it. He told me there was a day before and I should get my attorney because there's nothing you can do about it. I called and someone told me I had to speak with Mr. Smith. I've left messages for him almost every day for the past two weeks. He never returned my call. I came last Friday to talk to him, and he was telling me he doesn't know what they can do about it or anything, so I went and I talked to my attorney today. And for the past 10 years, if I've been paying $2,000 more to everybody in my community, I could sue this town of Bloomfield for at least $20,000. But that's not my problem. What I need to do is to get an appeal because I need to be paying taxes like everybody else. They keep taxing me out of my neighborhood. When I started, I was spending $3,000. Now I'm paying over $6,000, and nobody else in my neighborhood is not paying that. And we have the same kind of house and everything. So I would like to get an appeal, or what can I do from here?
I wanna, I wanna thank you for being here this evening, and I don't have a better answer for you than I did when we met. I believe you've missed the appeal period and the instructions from.
By one day.
The instructions from our department and our Tax Assessor's Office was that you needed to get an attorney to help fight for you.
I did come in, come in thirty, before the 31st of January to appeal. When they sent me the first paper out, they told me, "Don't worry about it, they're gonna redo it, and by January 31st, I'll get the other one." I'm only off on Fridays. On Fridays, take my mother and my brother to the doctor. I forget it by one day, and I didn't even know it was the appeal date, it was the 20th. So that one day, that shouldn't have been a problem. And if you had returned my call that same day I called you, we probably could have worked something out. But you did not return my call ever. I had to walk in on Friday to come in to talk to you, and you still didn't get back to me after you were supposed to talk to the guy. So I don't think I should have to wait for another year to pay the $6,000 every year, which I shouldn't have been paying in the first place.
Yes, ma'am, I, I understand the disconnect and, and for not being able to get back to you that week, I, I do apologize. However, it doesn't change the window that was open that's now closed for the appeal and the best, the best position for you moving forward.
The window was closed because they told me I should come back on, I should come back, they were gonna send me a new appeal, a new letter out. They did not send me that new letter out. So I did not know when the window was closed. It was closed by a day? Come on, that wasn't the reason why for them to do that. First of all, I shouldn't be paying that much taxes. So I shouldn't be left out of a window, they should have just did it in the first place. I shouldn't be paying that, I shouldn't be coming here 10 years in a row for the same thing. And every year, it keeps going up and up and up. So don't tell me to go pay no attorney money to fight my taxes.
That's the best advice that I can give you to advocate for yourself.
All right. Because then my $20,000 are being charged me every year.
So, um, I'm gonna ask the subcommittees to provide a report, um, in order. Community Service, Counselor Wong, you're gonna be all right?
I have no report. We meet next in April, and I'm actually gonna head out because I do not feel well. So, good night, thank you.
I'm going to ask Counselor Curtin to do Admin Education and Finance.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, the Administration Education Committee met on March 9th. We received a report from the Human Service Facility and Public Works. Human Service Facility Building is in the closeout phase. I think currently, right now, they're, they waiting to seed the fields. And at that point, I think there's an anticipated timeline for the certification of occupancy within the next two to three weeks. So that project is in closeout phase. The Public Works Facility is basically in Phase Two of the project, and I don't have much on, on that project at this time, but I know that the anticipated completion date for that project was May of this year. I think that timeline may be reduced due to the good weather we had during the winter, not much snow, so there may be a adjustment with that time, timeline. Under New Business, we had a presentation by Mr. Berman, who's the Chair of the Bloomfield Housing Authority. He gave a brief presentation to the committee and talked about concerns about housing, affordable housing within the town of Bloomfield, and the committee had exchanged with them. Currently, right now, Bloomfield has roughly around 17 or so scattered locations within the town for affordable housing. So I think this council is committed to make sure that we have that within the town of Bloomfield. So that discussion is gonna continue within committee. And we're gonna find ways where we can work with the state and local government here to make sure that we're able to find ways for folks who need help within the town of Bloomfield, that that help is there. We also had discussion with our Town Attorney in regards to having a Deputy Town Attorney within the town of Bloomfield. I think, I can't remember exactly how many years, at one point, we did have a Deputy Town Attorney. We talked about, you know, sharing responsibilities. Mr. Needleman has been the Town Attorney in the town of Bloomfield for the last 28 years, and I think from an organizational standpoint, the council is looking towards a transition. If Mr. Needleman was to retire, whatever the case may be, there's a lot of institutional knowledge that is currently with him, and we have to find ways where we have something in place and not just wait for Mr. Needleman to retire, or whatever the case may be, to then look for someone. So that discussion is gonna continue within committee. I know Mr. Needleman did send a, an email out, and I know the Town Manager did forward it to the full council. He had some concerns with trying to have a Deputy Town Attorney. Even though I know we had one per our charter, it doesn't really outline within the charter that we can do that. Who would, who would that person report to? So there's still discussions that have to take place in regards to that. So hopefully, in the next couple of months or so, this council, it will, will come before the council to have further discussions on how we, we deal with that. That's the end of my report for Admin Education, but I just wanna go on to Finance. I have nothing to report, but I do wanna go through the schedule for the upcoming budget sessions. The budget session starts this, this Thursday, Thursday, March 12th, at 7:00 PM. First budget session, we will review the budget for the Board of Ed. So I encourage parents and town residents to be a part of that process. On Tuesday, March 17th, at 7:00 PM, we have budget sessions to address revenue expenditures and capital improvements. On Thursday, March 19th, at 7 o'clock, the Boards and Agencies, Leisure Service, Senior Service, Youth and, uh, Social and Youth Services will present their budget. On Tuesday, March 24th, at 7:00 PM, a public hearing for public safety. On Thursday, March 26th, at 7:00 PM, Facilities and Public Works. Tuesday, March 31st, at 7:00 PM, Planning, Library Fixed Charges, General Government Administration. On Thursday, April 2nd, at 7:00 PM, the council will deliberate the budget at that point with everything that was presented to the council. They may be a potential, if needed. On Tuesday, April 7th, at 7:00 PM, with the council deliberation. And on Monday, May 4th, is, at 7:00 PM, is the annual Town Meetin. I just wanna emphasize and encourage the public to be involved in this process. I think it's important to hear from the public. The only way that we can make decisions is by hearing from the public on the various needs, so we could then make a decision on what are the projects that should go forward. So I encourage everyone to be a part of the process. I know these meetings will be televised, so if you can make it due to your own scheduling, please, you're able to watch it on, online, I think, the YouTube. I'm not sure if it's streaming right now, if it's actually on television Comcast. I'm not sure about that, but I know it's on YouTube. So please, I encourage you to come out and be part of the process, it's important. Thank you, and have a good, uh, thank you. Not even, I'm still here.
Public Safety, Counselor Goff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Public Safety met before this meeting, um, at 6:30. We had reports from the Police Department, and we also passed a resolution, uh, our, made a recommendation of a resolution of the council, which I think will be of interest to the public. But let me just take a few minutes to go through a couple of updates from Public Safety. As, as, as I think everyone has read in the paper, the police are still working on the double homicide from a few weeks ago. They do have a suspect, if you have not read that in the paper, and they are pursuing leads to arrest that. I think, they think this is a completely solvable and, um, case that will come to conclusion, and they are working on that. They are also working on resolving the kennel issue. The dogs, all of the dogs have been relocated, so they are now in, in other care. That is proceeding along. They have started their annual police academy. That's a very popular program that started last week and will be continuing. Accidents have been lower this year so far, as have crimes, um, the mainland being, well, the, uh, I'm sorry, the crimes, the larcenies actually are up in reporting. But part of that may just be that some of the company or the locations, Home Depot, Lowe, Stop &amp; Shop, they have taken more enforcement action this year. So they're, the Police Department is doing some analysis of the data to see if this is really an increase, or if it's really more just increased reporting of, of events. So that is going on. What I did wanna mention was down was the Fire Department calls. Both the Blue Hills and the Center District Fire Departments reported, they are have, they have had mostly, um, they've had, you know, the usual calls for faulty smoke detectors, things like that, nothing serious, and those calls continue to be down this year. So hopefully, some of the problems they've had in the past, people have had in the past with those kinds of devices have been taken care of, and we haven't had any major fire issues. The other major issue that was discussed at Public Safety, Counselor Wong introduced a resolution for the council for the legalization of cannabis for adult usage and for the pardon of all those previous offenders who have been incarcerated for violations of those laws. This resolution not only makes the case for supporting that as a, as a social justice, human freedom philosophical issue, but it also stands in support of a bill before the legislature, I believe it's SP 16, for the legalization. The committee unanimously recommended that that resolution move on to the council with the caveat, as I think we all agree, that we would have a public forum on this to get, to get citizen input, to get a lot of other input from our citizenry in terms of what they feel about that issue. So we will be scheduling that at some point in the relatively near future because for this resolution to have some, some impact on the legislative session, it will need to be passed in the, in the near future. So I think that completes my report. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Committee on Committees, Counselor Calhoun.
Oh, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Short and sweet, we're coming up on our month, and our next meeting will be March 16th, excuse me, March 16th, which is next Monday. Thank you.
Land Use and Economic Development, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Land Use and Economic Development met on February 26th, last Wednesday, or two Wednesdays ago, and the two items for discussion were the tax increment financing, whereby we're trying to develop the, a program to utilize in town, where to take advantage of increased values from development to siphon or to monetize the money from the difference in existing tax assessments to future tax assessments, which we can bond and thereby use it for, for infrastructure improvements that, that we ordinarily wouldn't have available. So this is, the three districts that we had talked about at, at our meeting, and the Town Planning staff has been working with Goman and York, our economic development consultants, to define these three district areas, Town Center, Toby Road, Granby Street, and Blue Hills Avenue. And there were some minor adjustments made during the course of that meeting. The next meeting should be on the 25th of March, and we are, at that point, will have more information from the consultants with regard to the amount of money that's involved in this transfer or that we can look at to borrow against when a developer comes in to improve it. Now also included, as we go down the line, and I think it's gonna take another four months or so, we need, once we have an outline, we need to go before the citizenry with a plan as to how we intend to move forward for them to comment on before it's, before it's passed. We also have to come up with a, with a, an advisory group that's going to be available to guide this process, a citizens advisory group or business advisory group, consisting of both citizens and business, whatever. This is, this will become a major effort to revitalize, economically revitalize these three areas. We also discussed the Reservoir Two lease. If you remember, the state of Connecticut had a 50-year lease for that piece of property just north of Seabury. That 50 years was up a year and a half ago. So since that time, we've been working with the Department of DEEP to refashion a new lease that enables public to continue use of the better part of that area. And they're coming back instead of a 50-year lease, I think it's a five or a 10-year lease, and they're asking the towns to perhaps do a little bit more. We're still in negotiation. Our main concern is that there's continued public use for that property. It's, it's basically flood, flood land, although there's some areas that may be developed. In fact, the Seabury people have developed a trail system through there under the last reservoir lease, and that, that's gonna be honored. So as we move forward, we should have a response to that, something that'd be ready for signing. I think it's probably gonna take a few more months because I'm just gauging by how slowly this process has been going thus far. Those are the two items that we had for discussion, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Old Business, 1819-45, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Policy on Reporting Requirements for Boards and Comi, and Commission Members. Is there a motion on the floor?
Some move.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
Madam Mayor, um, before we have any, any discussion on the thing, I think it's a straightforward thing, but I would like to make one friendly amendment, and that is, this, with these reporting requirements, this whole scheme was developed by the Committee on Committees probably over a year and a half ago. And since that time, there is another committee that should be added to the list. I recognize the list on the, on the, on the draft is not a, or in the proposed policy is not, is not said to be an exhaustive list, but I think that should be put on there. So I would like to add, add a friendly amendment that we add the Lower Farmington River and Salmon Brook Wild and Scenic Committee to the list of committees stated on the reporting requirements. That's a friendly amendment.
Yes.
Why wouldn't we want to add the Library Building Committee as well? Is that, there's, they don't report to anybody.
They go to Admin Education.
Yeah, they, they do, okay.
All the committees go to Admin Education. But thanks for the question.
Question?
Yeah, yes, amendment.
Yeah, oh, uh, I, since I made the motion, I would accept the friendly amendment. I think the purpose of this, when it came up a couple of years ago, was that there were certain boards and commissions for which we named people to, to give them the honor and responsibility for attending and participating on behalf of the town in certain activities. For example, the Policy Board, Capital Region, CROG Transportation Committee, Central Regional Tourism District, Greater Hartford Flood Commission, Transit District, Advisory, Cable TV, Council, MDC Representative Emergency Medical, Bloomfield Housing Authority, West Hartford Bloomfield Health District, and now the Lower Farmington River and Salmon Brook Wild and Scenic. Now, basically, uh, these folks are not, have never been obligated or no one's encouraged them to come and report what's going on. So there's a loss of, loss of, not only a loss of information, but a loss of stature. In fact, if we're appointing somebody, we expect they wanna do a job, and they wanna do a job. So this is just asking that they report to, back to council at minimum, once a year, it could be verbal or in writing, just so, or more frequently if they feel it's important. And that's something that they have to weigh. It's not, this reporting requirement is not intended to be onerous, but it's intended to continue a better flow of information.
Counselor DeLorenzo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. While I just had, I know I agree with Counselor Goff, this, this was before us, back when I was on the Committee on Committees, and we did move it to go forward, but now that I've had the chance to reread it, I don't, I'm having a problem with item number four. And again, I agree with the Deputy Mayor, you know, we're not trying to make this onerous, but bullet four is making this onerous, in my opinion, because it's saying that we want the representative of the Board or Commission to seek input from the council, town manager, or staff on issues prior to any vote to be taken by their Board or Commission. I don't see how that's, that's possible. We can't expect to comment on all their matters prior to them taking a vote on it when we won't even know when they're meeting, what's on their agenda, when they're gonna do it. So I would suggest that we either change that statement, or we remove it.
Is that a friendly amendment?
Well, I can make it one if, if.
May I comment before?
I mean, I, I. I, I mean, I think the seek input part is fine, but prior to them making a vote at their Board or Committee meeting, I just don't see how that's humanly possible for us to do.
Should they do it after they vote?
Well, no, but maybe they should send us an email or something. I don't, I mean, I, okay.
Counselor Goff.
Yeah, no, I, I, I understand Counselor DeLorenzo's concern here. I mean, it, it really is a.
I mean, it really is a, it is a, what, timing and procedural thing. I agree. The important thing here is this should seek input, and the other important, the other important comment is the relevant to Bloomfield, because I think in a lot of cases, these committees deal with large amounts of information, and most, a lot of it is just getting us the information, and I want to make a comment about Mr. Berman's presentation, Admin and Education of the Housing District, because that was very informative and gave us a lot of information that we did not have. So I, you know, I was going to make the comment that I think, I think the sort of special thing in there is the word relevant, but to the degree that we think it's onerous, the prior to any vote taken by their board or commission, just strike that phrase, and that would be fine.
That was my exact recommendation. So from after Bloomfield, put a period and remove the rest of the sentence would be my friendly amendment.
Is there a second on that?
Second accepted.
You second accepted, okay.
The original maker hasn't accepted it yet. Let me ask you this question. All we're asking them is to do, to talk to people in town, whether it's staff, council, manager, and be prepared to go into a vote. People are appointed to these committees, they have, may or may not have any experience in dealing with some of the issues that are beforehand, and this simply says they should seek input before making a decision, which I don't have, I don't understand what the problem that is. I don't say they don't have to, they can talk to somebody, they can talk to the town planner, they can talk to the town assessor, any one of the people in town that would help them understand better what the impact or what the decision is that they're acting on. So I'm not sure, I'm not sure I understand the objection.
So just having served prior to town council on the Bloomfield Housing Authority, I do find that prior to any vote taken to be probably a little onerous for them, especially because items are coming up on a monthly basis that have to be decided on in that meeting. A lot of times, we're finding out about it at that meeting, and we have to make a decision as committee to vote, and to hold it over for another month just so we can touch base with town council, or just so they could touch base with town council would put rehabilitation of houses back a month, and putting people back into houses back a month, and all that other stuff. So I would agree that, you know, maybe some of these other boards maybe have the opportunity to do that, but I think that, you know, I think if they're keeping, I mean, we're putting these people on these boards, I think we're trusting them to make decisions that are good in the best interest of Bloomfield, and I believe that they should be given that latitude a little bit. I do believe that they should report back to town council and at least let us know what's going on and where they all stand. I just don't think that we can put the onus on them to do it prior to every single vote, or, you know, even some of the major votes, some of these things just have to be voted on and move forward.
Is there anyone else, any other councillor has any other input? I know, it's just like a volley between just a few, so I want to make sure everyone's, I just want to make sure everyone's voice is heard. Deputy Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Councilman. I think that's a good response. I think, however, if we look back up at number one, we're reading only on number four. Number one says that we're looking for specifically potential issues affecting the town of Bloomfield in a physical, fiscal, or other significant manner. The operation of day-to-day issues is, may not be of terrific import, but somebody could read that way, so I understand that. Matters of council interest include but are not limited to proposed changes in fees, taxes, or utilization rates that affect Bloomfield, organizational changes, development policies, legislation pending, or votes that directly impact Bloomfield's fiscal or physical development. So these are a higher level, but if it's confusing, you know, I can compromise in some ways and include some of that, I have no problem with. I just want to get this thing started, but I hope that you'll read both, look at both of those and realize we're not looking for, you know, day-to-day activities, we're looking at things that are going to cost the town physically or fiscally.
Councilor Goff.
Yeah, and I think both, I think all the discussion is to the point. Personally, and I'm very much in favor of this policy, I understand the concern about prior to any vote, I think any is a little, is a little strong, and so the fact that we talk about the matters that are relevant, and the fact that we are making it clear that representatives of these boards or commissions should seek input from the council, the town manager, other staff, I think that's the most important thing here, and I think we should move ahead with it, just dropping the prior to any vote taken.
So I'm going to go ahead and call the question. Right?
Well, he's accepted the amendment.
So I'm going to call the question. So all in favor of the amendment to the amendment?
Madam Mayor, I just have one other question, I'm sorry. Well, this is not our typical template for a policy that the town is setting, so would the manager be putting this into our standard policy template?
Would have to.
Because it's not, it's not a policy template.
It would have to, it would have to.
With a number and all that other good stuff, right?
Right. So all in favor of the amendment to the amendment? So this policy is as is, we're only taking off prior to any vote to be taken by their board or commission. All in favor of the amendment to the amendment?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. So now we're going to have the court. So I don't know exactly how to go about this, but I do know that State Representative Bobby Gibson wanted to give us a report, and I know that he was past the time, so do we need to make a motion? I mean, I don't know what to do with that.
Madam Mayor? Well, actually, we're past the new business, so we are actually in new business, right?
So we can.
So I would, I would move that we add to agenda item a report from Representative Gibson?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Representative Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you for allowing me to come up and speak today. The purpose of my talk is to actually introduce to you some bills that are being presented up at the state legislature during this session. This is a short session, but there's a lot of bills that's coming across. So what I would like to do is, if you would permit, Madam Mayor, to actually come maybe once a month or at your request, and to introduce or to have bills shared with you that I think are pertinent to Bloomfield and the 15th District, if that'll be okay, if I can maybe come back and periodically and update you guys.
Sounds good, sounds good to me.
Okay, good. So one of the first bills from the handout I gave you is a bill, Senate Bill Number 390, An Act Concerning Minority Teacher Recruitment. And this bill assists to establish a program that assists certain minority school employees in obtaining teacher certification, to develop a plan to promote careers in teaching profession in students in high school, and establish a task force to study educator retention and sustainability. Although, you know, here in Bloomfield, we do a pretty good job with having a diverse teacher background, at least in the middle school. Overall, in the state of Connecticut, that is a problem, and we, studies have shown that students learn when they have a teaching, teachers that come from diverse backgrounds instead of just one background. So this is a very important bill. It's going to allocate funding for this endeavor, and hopefully within this year, this can get passed. We passed it last session, but it needed a little bit more meat onto it, if I could say that. The second bill is a bill that was submitted, Senate Bill 9392, An Act Establishing Personal Financial Management Pilot Program. So I'm going to talk about another bill in a second, but this program, this bill right here would, it requires school districts to offer financial management planning in the 10th grade in their civics class, which is not being taught right now. So this is another very important bill, because our students grow up not learning financial literacy, a lot of them go to college or go on with their careers, and they get duped, if I can say so, into getting high-cost credit cards or taking out loans needlessly, and they're not in a position to do that, and this will hinder their start-up in life, because a lot of students start with bad credit. So I think that is a bill that is very important to our children. The next bill, House Bill 5436, An Act Prohibiting School District Policies That Discriminate Against Students Based on Natural Hair Styles. Now, you would think that this is something that's a no-brainer, but if you have read or have been keeping up in the news, more and more students are being discriminated against because of their hairstyles, and this is actually something that's happening in America, in corporate America. I can remember a story about a student in a wrestling tournament, they would not let him wrestle unless he cut his hair. So this bill will prevent things like this, and actually, there is a sister bill, if I may, it's called the Crown Act, House Bill 5388. One of our colleagues, Representative Robin Porter from New Haven, had a hearing on that last week. So either these bills may get combined, or one of the bills may come through, but I think this is a very important bill for, again, for our kids. Number four, House Bill 5378, An Act Concerning the Integration, excuse me, of Social Emotional Learning and Programs of Professional Development for Educators in Connecticut. So this bill right here will integrate the principles and practices of social emotional learning in the program of professional development for educators in the state. And so it's a bill that will help educators actually know more how to educate our children, what are some of the needs of our children, what our children are going through, be more sensitive to what our kids, the baggage, if you will, that they come to school with. So, and as adults and as educators, we need to be more aware that, you know, you can't teach a kid unless you reach out and see where they are. Sometimes we have to take a step back and do that. So I think that's a very important bill. Number five, An Act Concerning the Treasurer's Recommendation for Inclusion of Financial Literacy in the Public School Curriculum. So as I said, there's another bill that's introduced by State Treasurer Sean Woodin, and his bill is actually a little bit different than the bill that's talked about in putting financial literacy in civics. He wants a one-credit mandatory bill in which financial literacy is taught before you graduate. The other one would be implemented in civics 10th grade. This will be a one-credit bill that's mandatory, the same principle as far as what result he's trying to get out of it. This bill is going to take a little bit more work because a financial tag may be attached to it, but I think the state is moving forward in these discussions about financial literacy for our children. Number six, House Bill 5433, An Act Concerning the Creation of a Special Education Excess Cost Cooperative. So this bill I felt was really important, especially to Bloomfield, because I've had, you know, several conversations with, actually with some members here in this room, whereas, you know, Bloomfield has a high number of special education students, as well as the monies that we receive from the state, we actually have to take a closer look at and actually see what we can do about that. But this bill right here will, it'll create a captive insurance company, and whereas monies will be allocated to school districts, high alliance school districts, which Bloomfield is an alliance school district, to help reimburse the costs of special education funding that's above and beyond our normal special education needs. So again, this bill is important, more talk has to be done with this bill, because again, there's going to be some costs attached to it, but I think it's moving in the right direction. And number seven, I believe we're on, An Act Establishing a Task Force to Study Issues Related to Bullying and Sexual Harassment in Schools. And again, I think this is important because, you know, in Bloomfield schools, I haven't heard a lot of reports on bullying or sexual harassment, but these are things that we must be on top of so they won't become a problem. And so this law will create a task force that will study this in schools to make sure that these issues aren't coming up, and create plans to address them as they come across. And then finally, number eight, An Act Reconstituting the Achievement Gap Task Force. This is very important, because, I'm not sure if people know, but Connecticut has one of the highest achievement gaps, and so this task force will job will be to do a study to find out what's actually the causes, and actually, the talk now is not achievement gap, it's opportunity gap, because that means, what it means is that, you know, all of our students aren't getting the same opportunities towards education. A little bit has to do with the social emotional learning component, but what opportunities do our kids have to after-school programming, to books, to additional services in schools so that we can close this opportunity gap? And again, this is something that's important to the state of Connecticut, as well, especially to the 15th District. And there's one more, if I may, would have been a knife, I don't have the bill number on here, but perhaps, Madam Mayor, if I can come back, I can explain that one. But we had a hearing on climate change, education being taught in schools, and there was a number of students who came up on last, I believe it was last Friday, and testified on why climate change needs to be taught in schools. It's part of the next-generation science standards, but it's not like it's something that's put into law where teachers have to teach it. And in the course of a year, you know, some teachers will, you get through your curriculum, but there may be things you teach with more fidelity than others, but this bill here will make sure that it's, the climate change is taught and give it the due respect that it deserves.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Representative Gibson, for providing us, you know, a report on what's going on. But I just have some questions, and I know I would like to invite you to come out on the 12. We're going to be going through the school budget, and I think it's healthy to have all parties in the council chambers during that discussion. The one thing that, when we look, when we see bills, and, you know, I've been following how things work when it comes to some of these bills, you put the bill in place, but there is no component as far as funding-wise, right? And too often, as we know, the burden lies on each individual town, and case in point in the town of Bloomfield, as a parent, I've attended a couple of the budget sessions and stuff, when you look on a more micro level at each school's budget, there's not much wiggle room with resources. I mean, what is the state doing to actually be a better partner when it comes to help fund in some of those gaps that, you know, more and more burdens are put in on each individual town? And in cases, some of these bills, they put it into law, but the financial component to it is also then transferred to each town. What is the discussion changing as far as realistically where the state is going to be more of a partner in trying to help out with some of that cost? Because some of these are good programs, good bills, but I'm concerned with, when it comes to the funding component to a lot of these mandates, yeah?
Thank you, Councilor Curtin. And so, great question, great question. So you know the term squeaky wheel gets the most attention. So here in So, here in Bloomfield, we need to really have conversations as to the monies that we're getting. And again, we need to actually come together as a team and talk it out. Because, again, the work I do at the state, it's hard to focus on everything. But when things are brought to my attention, I can be that representative who can go back and I could ask for certain things. So, for example, when we talk about funding from the state of Connecticut, and I know we've been talking about special ed funding, all right? Once that is brought to my attention and we get the proper numbers, and I've had some informal conversations with Mr. Smith about special ed, and I've reached out to Wendy Banish and actually to Dr. Thompson. And so, once we get the numbers as to the funding that we've received over the past couple of years and compare that to the number of students that we have in special ed and actually also compare that to the rest of the town, then we can go back and we can say, listen, appropriations committee, you know, we're not getting the monies that we need. So, it's going to take meeting and talking, like I just said, to make sure that, you know, we're actually fighting for those monies, those funds.
I just want to say, we know for a fact. And there's no secret there. I'm just saying, they need to be a little bit more urgency from the state level on really looking at these issues and finding ways to help fund districts a little bit more.
I agree. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I strongly support Councilman Curtin's comment to these unfunded mandates. We can't afford to continue operating under the system the way it's handled. And I think we encourage you, as our representative, to stand tall and hold the line when it comes to these new ideas. Where's the money coming from? So, thank you for that. I have a, I do have a question. When are the hearings scheduled so that we can be aware of when, you know, how to participate here?
Okay. So, I don't have a hearing scheduled in front of me. But I can, hearings, this is the time period, the next couple of weeks, when hearings are actually happening. So, there's like eight or nine committees, right? So, I don't know each committee's hearing date, but I can make sure I can get that information to you.
Okay. And also, I guess, the other agencies and organizations in town, including the PTAs who might want to participate and comment, I would think, circulate. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Great suggestion.
Thank you for coming in, State Rep Gibson. Thank you for the information. And just as a point of information, if you go out to the website for the state of Connecticut and you put the bills in, they will tell you when the hearings are. But if you can provide us with some information on that, that'd be great. And if you can come in periodically just to update us, that would be wonderful. And if you can get them to give us extra money for special ed between now and the time that the budget's over, that would be a miracle. But hey, miracles happen every day. So, thank you so very much. I totally appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks for having me.
Not a problem.
Have a good evening.
At this time, we're going to have our reports from our mayor and our town manager. And I'm going to go first because I should have done something before, and I totally didn't do it. So, I'm going to do it now. It's a proclamation on the importance of the all-girls space offered by Girl Scouts. Whereas, the 2020 marks the 108th anniversary of Girl Scouts of the USA, the largest and most successful leadership program for girls in the world. And whereas, Girl Scouts unleashed the GIRL, go-getter, innovator, risk-taker, leader in every girl, preparing her for a lifetime of leadership. And whereas, Girl Scouts combine time-tested, research-backed methods with exciting, modern programming that speaks to today's girls and is designed to cater to the strengths of girls' leadership development. And whereas, Girl Scouts offers girls 21st-century programming in science, technology, engineering, and math, which is STEM, the outdoor entrepreneurship and beyond, helping girls develop invaluable life skills and take the lead early and often. Early and often, wow. And whereas, the world's premier leadership development organization for girls, Girl Scouts welcome girls of all backgrounds and interests who want to develop the courage, confidence, and character to make the world a better place. And whereas, the Girl Scouts Gold Award, the highest and most prestigious award in Girl scouting, calls on Girl Scouts in grades nine to 12 to take on projects that have a measurable and sustainable impact on the community by first assessing a need, designing a solution, completing a project, and inspiring others to sustain it. And whereas, with more than 100 years of experience, Girl Scouts bring a wealth of knowledge to programs that deliver girls' cornerstone experiences with benefits that last a lifetime. And whereas, today, more than 50 million women are Girl Scouts alums and 2.6 million girls and adults are current members. Now, therefore, I, Suzette DeBeetham Brown, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby applaud the Girl Scout movement and Girl Scouts of Connecticut for providing girls with a safe, inclusive, all-girls space where they can hone their skills and develop leadership abilities. And I declare the 12th of March to be Girl Scout Day. Dated in Bloomfield, Connecticut, the 12th of March, Suzette DeBeetham Brown, Mayor, and the entire Bloomfield's Town Council. Girl Scouts. I'm a girl. Love it. This was wonderful. I enjoyed reading this. Yes, I did. So, I know that we are coronavirus on high alert. So, I just also wanted to read, "The West Hartford-Bloomfield Health District has been actively monitoring the current situation of coronavirus COVID-19. The Health District is responsible for providing professional public health services to residents of West Hartford and Bloomfield, including the monitoring of communicable diseases such as COVID-19. The Department of Public Health has designated, has been designated the lead agency." So, person-to-person spread of the virus is throughout, person-to-person spread of the virus occurs mainly via respiratory droplets produced when an infected person coughs or sneezes. Much is still unknown about how the virus spreads. Take these everyday preventative actions to help stop the spread of germs. Wash hands often and with soap and water for at least 20 seconds. Avoid touching your eyes, nose, and mouth with unwashed hands. Avoid close contact with people who are sick. Stay home when you're sick. Cover your cough or sneeze with a tissue, then throw the tissue in the trash. Clean and disinfect frequently touched objects and surfaces. The West Hartford-Bloomfield Health District will continue to work with the Emergency Management Division for the town of Bloomfield. And you can go to the Health District for more information. We do have a link to the Health District on our website. I was also on a call today with the Governor's Task Force. And I can tell you that the state of Connecticut is prepared and continue to prepare for what we have heard is not an if, but a when. We do know that there are neighboring towns that are monitoring cases. We do know that it's recommended that we don't have any big events, events with 100 or so individuals or more is not recommended. I know that there are towns that are canceling their St. Patrick's Day parades. There are towns, neighboring states that have declared a state of emergency. I know that the West Hartford-Bloomfield Health District had a very informative meeting with the Board of Education on last week. And just today, they received a list of activities and trips that the board might be taking to visit other schools or interaction with other schools. So, they're working closely with the board on how to proceed because ultimately, the Board of Ed will have to make those decisions. We will also try to get a direct link to 211 on our website. They're asking, of course, you know, when you greet people, you're going to do the elbow thing or the fist bump or just basically try to stay away, wave from across the room or something like that. We will set up a unified command group here in town. And a meeting will be scheduled sometime later this week or early next week. The West Hartford-Bloomfield Health District is the local incident command on this. It's the Department of Public Health. And then, you have your local health districts, and then you have your towns. Matt Carter talked about, by next week, we might be hearing a lot more of cases where people are self-monitoring or where they will be in the hospitals. It's also stated out of China that children really don't get sick from this. They are carriers, so they will get sick, but they'll recover quickly. The people that we're concerned about are the elderly and those that might have a pre-existing condition. So, we're going to make sure that we provide as much help and support as possible. I know the Health District is being very consistent and clear with the messages that they're putting out. So, I thought that that would be important to go ahead and share with our town. Also, please know that library cards are available to every and anyone from birth on down. The Citizens Academy will start on April 16th. It's a great academy where you can learn about the different facets of our town. If you want to know how the town operates and what really goes on when the TV turns off, that's the place that you should start. The winter reading challenge for the library ends on the 18th. So, if you're a part of that, please be mindful. AARP Mature Driver class will be on March 26th at 9:00 a.m. So, if you are of a certain age, please take full use of that. I think that might be it. I also just wanted to commend Social and Youth Services for their open-mic night that they had a couple of weeks ago. It was absolutely amazing. The students were safe. We had officers there making sure. They had, some of our, some of our staff members got on the dance floor. And if anybody wants to see the video, I have it. And there will be another event on the last Friday of this month. We're asking you to please send out your students. It's a really safe and enjoyable place for them to be. We are having our kickoff, well, we should be having our census kickoff on April 1st. That might change based on the virus that I just spoke about. But please be mindful, that census information will be starting to come to your homes. Maybe the middle of next week, we're asking you to please fill out that census. Fill it out. Don't throw it out. Your count equals money for our town, for our schools, for our roads, for our infrastructure. It's really, really, really important. So, please look out for those envelopes. If you do not fill out the census, you will have someone coming and knocking on your door. So, please, self-report, fill out the census. You can do it by paper or you can do it by phone. Thank you. And at this time, we'll have our report from our town manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Staff also would echo all of the points that the mayor brought up about the coronavirus. It's something that people need to become familiar with. Just to let you know, the last time I reported to council was on the 10th of February, giving you some updates since then. A week before last, we heard from the Health District on things to be thinking about in terms of the coronavirus. And that information has been made available on our website. It includes some of the details that the mayor conveyed just a moment ago. That message came through, and last week, we met with the superintendent of schools to talk about initial steps towards coordination and cooperation with the school district. And we brought together all of our department leads to talk about challenges that we were going to have in terms of embracing the event, being prepared for the event, where we would source materials, and how we would coordinate with each other and overcome those challenges. All the while, focusing everyone on the incident command structure and the need to focus on the Health District as the advisory and directional organization that would help us move forward. This week, just today, the governor held a call, as the mayor indicated. I took notes on that call, and the bulk of the manager's report that's in front of you are the details of that call. If there are any questions about that, I'm sure that the Health District, the mayor, maybe I might be able to connect you with people. I know that our emergency management personnel, as well as the Health District, will be very active with our departments as we plan forward. Just so that people know, we're facing the same kinds of challenges that you would face at home in terms of sourcing appropriate materials and supplies and getting our cleaning protocols in order so that we're providing as safe an environment to the public as we possibly can as we go through this. If there are any questions that council has about the report, please let me know.
At this time, very much. Can I get a motion for the two of the minutes of the February 24th meeting?
Second.
Any discussions? Call of favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Mayor, I have to abstain. I was out of town and not present on the 24th.
One I've spoken to, half wasn't here. We're going to do council comments, and we'll start with Mr. Politis.
Just a reiteration of what's been stated. The budget process starts on Thursday night. I think everybody should be involved in that. We certainly want to hear everybody's thoughts on the budget. There's some large increases proposed, both by Board of Education and by the town. And I think it's important that you come out, let your voices be heard so that we can make the appropriate steps to echo the actual people that have put us in this position. So, get out and be heard. Thank you.
It's okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to reiterate the same thing that my colleague, Councilor Politis, just said. I think it's very important. We have a very, it's going to be a challenging budget year this year. And I'm glad we went through the schedule before. I will point out that we have just received budget books from the Board of Education. And I had made a suggestion in an email that would it be possible potentially to switch them to a later date so that we'd have more time to absorb that? I just throw that out as something for the council to think about. I mentioned when we were talking about the reporting requirements, how important it is that we know what's going on in some of these committees, not because we have any desire to oversee them or second-guess them, but because it's just important to know what's going on. And last week, at the Admin Education meeting, we had the really first report I've ever heard from the Affordable Housing, you know, the Affordable Housing Committee. And it was just, it was a very fascinating discussion, and we learned a lot. It also made me aware, you know, what they do, the housing authority does a specific task, and they do not take care of all the affordable housing in town. But it also, understanding what they're doing and what other people are doing, it makes you aware that we need to be, we as a council in setting policy, need to be aware of how all these pieces go together. Because a few years ago, prior council gave sort of abatements for apartment complexes in the center of town with no consideration to how much affordable housing would be provided by those apartment complexes. And again, when the town is putting up money for, you know, putting up money through a tax abatement for specific, for specific, you know, developers and private interests, I think that it has the right to expect that it will get, that it will accomplish some of its goals in return. And I think it is a very reasonable goal that there should have been, there could have been, if it had been considered in more depth, an affordable housing component included in those apartments. Because the revitalization of downtown involves the, you know, classic urbanism involves having folks living together at all income levels. So, I think it's just important that we know what's going on with all of these things as they transpire. It's interesting today with all the talk about coronavirus. I hope a lot of people were outside today because today felt like the first day of spring. I actually got out on the bike trail today. And it was just very weird to be out on the bike trail and to feel extremely outside and healthy and then listen to the news and, you know, gloom and doom, and the plague is here and whatever. So, hopefully, I think we're doing the right thing and being prepared for it. But hopefully, it will not be nearly as bad as some of the scenarios are being painted. Finally, I'd like to spend just a- Uh, finally, I'd like to spend just a minute or two talking about the MDC. Um, as a lot of you know, I think the MDC has once again passed discounts uh for one high-volume user, Niagara Niagara Water. This was an issue in Bloomfield a number of years ago. And um, I don't want to go through the the reasoning uh of plus or pro or negative this, but I do want to give you a few statistics, because this, to me, is sort of one of the problems that's, well, what's wrong with our system of governance at this point. So, um, the MDC held a public hearing on the discounts, I think, two weeks ago. I think it was the same night as our, as our last council meeting. Uh, and then they received written, written um, written testimony, written uh pro-con uh after that. And then they also had um uh another session where they actually passed these, and they had pro-con, et cetera. So, here are the statistics on that, just so people know. At the public hearing, when they had the public hearing, they had a total of thirty-one speakers. Three speakers, three speakers, well, actually, they had a total, I'm sorry, they had a total of thirty-one speakers from the MDC towns. Of those thirty-one speakers, three speakers spoke in favor of the discounts, twenty-eight spoke against. From outside the districts, they had five speakers, all spoke against. And those who attended the hearing did not speak but registered an opinion, none were for the discounts, twelve were against. In written comments to the MDC, they received zero comments in favor of the discounts and a hundred and eight comments from MDC towns against, and a hundred and fifteen comments from non-MDC town again, towns against. So, um, I didn't add that up, but it's pretty overwhelming. Um, and then, in getting all this testimony and having hearings and supposedly garnering what the public thinks about this, four, four MDC commissioners voted against the discounts, the rest voted in favor. Uh, I think there's something wrong here. Clearly, people are speaking and the, the powers that be aren't listening. So, uh, I I will commend Bloomfield's MDC representative, Byron Lester. He was one of the four that spoke against it, and I think that's a reflection of the community, uh, community views on this issue. Um, but I do think that it's important that we recognize that something's not working when this many people speak against something, write against something, express their opinion against something, and they're ignored. Thank you.
Councilwoman Merrick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Not to repeat the good words that have already been spoken, um, I'd like to mention that this next Sunday at four o'clock, um, there'll be a cleanup of the East Coast Greenway, uh, our bike path in Bloomfield, and all are welcome. Uh, going to gather at that, uh, Old St. Andrews. Um, and so that's, we're trying to get some kind of an organization going of those interested in the bike path. Um, also, I'd like to say something about, I'm very proud of my grandmother, Alice Merritt, who had Camp Alice Merritt, the Girl Scout camp, named after, she started the Girl Scouts in Hartford County back a hundred years ago, and then went on to become Connecticut's first woman senator. Um, so, it's, I can't help but mention that in regards to that. And um, I'd also like to say that I'm very optimistic about uh our budget session. I think we're going to be um dealing with it intelligently. I think we have a good start. Our town manager has given us a good book to work from. He's worked very hard at it, and uh I'm hoping we come up with something that uh is something that will serve us. We never have enough money, and uh so that's always a problem, but um we we ought to be able to keep moving in most of these things. We'll never, we probably won't satisfy everybody, but uh we'll try. And I think the town generally has done a good job in doing that, so I'm looking forward to this year. Thank you.
Councilwoman Catherine.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I would like to iterate um our situation with the budget upcoming. Um, please, we encourage you as citizens of Bloomfield to come out to see where your money is going, where your money is being spent. As far as with uh the coronavirus, I was a traveler this past week, and uh being in and in an airport, traveling um to and through my destination, I would like to say um it's something to be mindful of. Uh, there is, you know, we get a cold, a regular cold, and we get a lingering cough. And you're in close proximity on an airplane with some, someone with a lingering cough, it's serious cause to be concerned. You continually worry about, okay, when am I going to get that call, that I might have been in proximity to someone. So, the the concern is real, but if we take proper precautions, washing of our hands, um, being mindful about, you know, not just coughing just outwardly, make it into your your arm sleeve, encourage your children to do the same. Um, we know that the schools can be germ factories, um, but it's really helpful for our, the parents to encourage the children. Be consistent, be constant, be vigilant on washing their hands, coughing into their arms. Parents, please help your children to be mindful of what's going on. We're living in serious times. Thank you.
Uh, thank, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I I wanted to start off by talking just briefly a little bit about the budget, and uh I agree with my colleague that mentioned about, we received the, the book for the the school budget tonight. But the thing is, and I think this is the disconnect with the town with communication, the actual budget was online for almost a month or so, uh, online. I was able to go and pull it down from the website. I think we really need to do a little better job as how communication gets across. Something like that should have been linked on our town website to be able to, folks to navigate and get stuff. So, just so everyone know, it was online, but we need to communicate better. I was able to pull it down. I just want to briefly talk about the school budget. Um, it's, it's roughly around a ten percent increase, roughly around ten percent increase. And what I did on a more micro level, I went school by school, and fortunately, I have two kids within the school system, so I attended both budget meetings for both schools, um, Mete Comet and and the middle school. And what I discovered, when you look at it from a micro level standpoint, um, you're actually seeing that even with the increase, school by school, they're not meeting what the needs are. They're basically tipping the, the tip of the, um, what they're, what they, what the needs are for each schools. So, the the reality is, our schools need to be funded a little bit more. Um, I know a lot of the, the extra increase this year has a lot to do with staff, uh, for various schools, various programs, and so on. So, when you look at it from an aggregate standpoint, ten percent seems a lot, but when you go down to each level, each school, they, there was still a void, uh, even with this increase. Uh, when you look at the last ten years, and I I totally disagree with this approach where for five years of that ten years, you know, there were zero percent increase. I I think that's a mistake, right? It was done for various reasons, and I understand that, but I think it was, we're dealing with the issue now from, from those years that we went year by year and didn't have an increase. So, I think it's a, it's a very challenging budget process. Um, I believe that uh we need to invest in our schools. We, we need to make sure those resources are going to the classroom. I think it's important, our, we, we definitely need to have equity in education, and I think sometimes we hear public schools across the board, and we think that all public schools are are equally funded. And the reality is, it's all connected to tax dollars, right? So, you go to most towns who can afford it, the resources are there, because they get it through taxes. A town like us may be a little different. Uh, so I think the, the council really have to look at the budget. I've done a lot of research myself, uh, from various districts. For example, I looked at um Windsor. Uh, Windsor is the one town that's similar to Bloomfield. They have a student population roughly around thirty-five-hundred or so. Their increase, I think, when I looked online, it was roughly around two percent, a little less than that, but they have a, their total budget is a hundred and eight, eight million, per se, compared to Bloomfield, where I think roughly it's forty-something, forty-six, forty-seven million. So, I think you kind of have to look at that and say, are we properly funded, uh, our schools to make sure they're successful? And I think that's what the council has to look at. And I know tonight with Representative Gibson, I think it's also important for the, the state to, to play their role and to make sure they're funded in the towns and grants and so on to, to help us with that, because the burden is on the taxpayers. But I think it's important for us to, to fund our schools. So, I think we're going to have to look at this budget hard, and um, you know, the schools do need the funds they're looking for. I, I personally went through it myself, and I, I look forward for my colleagues to going through it themselves and, and hearing their input, uh, but I think it's going to be a tough decision, because like everyone said, I think the overall budget even for the town is roughly around, when you look with the school being in it, it's roughly around ten percent. Obviously, we're going to go through it and make adjustments, but I think right now, where I'm looking from, for the schools, it's, it's difficult to not give them the fund that they're looking at. So, hopefully, we'll have uh those discussions. In regards to the coronavirus, uh, um, I'm here tonight, and kids, they recover, so I have to now really keep an eye on my kids coming in and trying to play with my face and my nose and so on. So, I'm going to have to keep them at a, a distance now, like, oh. But, but anyway, I, yeah, six feet. But I think we have to, I think we have to, we have to be smart, we have to be careful. We have to also pay attention to our seniors, and if we have neighbors, you know, monitor them and make sure that they're safe. Um, and I think as a town, we have to provide a little bit more information online. Not only online, there's residents within our town that don't have access to a computer or whatever the case may be, so I know we're going to follow up with the town manager to find different avenues to get that information out. Obviously, I think you look at the stock market today, I mean, it's just going, it's going crazy. I mean, everyone is panicking, and I think sometimes with lack of information, people panic more. So, I think we need to do a good job in the town of Bloomfield in getting that message out, making sure people are informed, working with the Board of Ed, uh, and various facilities within the town of Bloomfield to make sure that we're taking all steps to make sure our residents are safe. Uh, thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everybody. I, I don't have too much more to say, because a lot has already been said, and I'm not going to repeat all of it for you, but I do, again, want to emphasize the budget and just ask that if you are interested in one of those topics on one of those nights that is on the schedule, please come out. And it's also important, what we heard from Representative Gibson, I mean, that specific bill about the creation of a special education excess cost cooperative, I think is imperative, because if that is funded, that would be a big help to the town of Bloomfield, and it would have to be funded. Uh, we have learned that a lot of our special needs kids, it could cost up to a hundred thousand dollars per student, per calendar, per academic year, to take care of the needs of that child. And we've run into the issues this year and last year where we didn't adequately account for the number of students that we were going to have with special needs, because you don't always know when they're going to enter the district. Uh, so, when they do, they oftentimes come with their own individualized uh plan, and those plans have to be adhered to, and it, it involves a lot of expense. So, I think that's a great bill, uh, if it can make it through, uh, but it would have to be funded so that we could get some relief on the costs for the uh special ed. So, I did want to, I did want to point that out. That would be one I would like to follow. Uh, again, the budget process, we already talked about, everybody mentioned it, coronavirus, we talked about, everybody mentioned it. Um, back to Philly Park, one of my favorites. So, I do want, Roseanne, I guess, left, did have to leave, but um our, I'd like to thank one of our co-chairs, Roseanne Azarian, who was here to read this statement. And I just wanted to point out that uh the Philly Park ambassadors have been doing an outstanding, we, our Philly Park ambassador that was here is no longer here, but I, I just wanted kudos to, to those kids, because they're really interested in the park, they want to come out, they want to be of assistance, and uh we want to have a program that they could use, and they, when we want to have a park they could use, and they want to be involved in it. So, I want to thank Roseanne and the Philly Park ambassadors for what they do on behalf of, of the park. And I think that was all that I had for tonight, so I will thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The budget, it's the most important, most responsible thing that this council has to do. That's what we're elected to deal with. There's nothing more important than the budget, because it details how the town moves forward and how it operates. And you can certainly appreciate all that you've heard tonight and the fact that right now, we're dealing with state and federal governments which are short on cash, or at least one cash that they're willing to share with us as they, as they used to, and we're dealing with the, the exigencies of a pandemic. So, we have to, amidst all of this, still go through the process of coming up with a budget that attempts to meet current needs but doesn't bankrupt us in the process going forward. It's a very, uh, I would say, di- difficult but understandable process when it's all broken down. And I think that I, I would encourage people, as, as my colleagues have, to come out to some of these budget hearings. They'll be on TV as well, but the big, the end, at the end of the process on, on May fourth, is the town meeting in which we discuss the budget openly with a, a finalization going forward, uh, with the town. So, participate in it. Get to understand what the decision-making process is all about, and some of the expenses, some of the concerns that are important to all of you and to, to other people as well. Um, and in that regard, I wanted to compliment the, the town manager and the finance staff for the quality of the document that they put together. Uh, it makes it easier to understand where these monies are going and why they've been spending. It doesn't always tell you, well, these are things we've been doing for years, but we don't have to do them anymore. It doesn't tell you that, but that's something we have to look at as well, is to try and make some sense, try and refine where possible, and try and be vigilant in, in how we spend your tax dollars. Uh, finally, I wanted to give a shout-out to our zoning enforcement officer for success of a project that's been going on for a couple of years. We were able to get a property on Jackson Road closed down, finally. There was a blighting influence in that neighborhood, Pershing Park neighborhood, and for over two years, we've been trying to deal with it, but the vigilance paid off. It's, this is not something that the code enforcement people can solve overnight or with the passage of a, of an order or a, a direction. Lots of times, most of the time, property owners have more resources to go to the courts, and the courts are much more supportive of a lot of their uh, uh, issues. When it comes to making a declaration, the court usually favors the property owner until the property owner runs out of excuses. And I think that's what happened on this property, and for, hopefully, the residents of that neighborhood can feel a little bit more relieved. And I thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
So, thank you for all who stayed the entire meeting. Thank you very much. Helen Keller says, alone, we can do so little, together, we can do so much. Everyone has talked about the budgets. I am going to invite, implore, encourage, beg residents of Bloomfield to come out to every single budget session. I know I'm asking a lot, but I will be here. And here's why it's important. You have elected nine members to make decisions on your behalf. In order for us to be able to make the best decision possible, we must hear your voice, because you have nine individuals up here with nine different soapboxes, nine different interests, nine different ideas, but at the end of the day, we need to make one decision on this budget in the best interest of our town. So, once again, I'm asking, I'm inviting, I'm encouraging, I'm imploring, I am begging. Please come out, lend your voice to this budget session. Don't take the easy way out and stay at home and watch. Come out, be engaged, offer your opinion.
Come out, be engaged, offer your opinion, tell us what's important to you, please. Because when this budget is decided, it will affect every single one of us. Thank you very much. And with that said, can I have a motion for us to enter executive session with the town manager, the assistant to the town manager, the town attorney, and our human resources director? All in favor?
Aye.
So be it. Thank you.